Let me just get my.
Leary has a tea time. He doesn't want to see us stop. We gotta keep going.
All right, so I'm gonna call Committee of the Whole to order. Is there any declaration of interest? Seeing none, we will proceed. Item number three, looking at the consent agenda. Is there anything in the consent agenda that needs to be pulled?
Counselor Compass.
Counselor Compass.
You're on mute, Counselor Compass.
Thank you very much. I would like to pull item H, I think it is, correspondence from the town of Blue Mountains.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Then it is moved by Counselor Woodbury and seconded by Counselor O'Leary that we approve the consent, the items on the consent agenda. Any opposed? That is indeed Carrie. Thank you very much. All right, so we're on to items for direction and discussion. Item number five A. Budget assumptions. And timelines. This will be moved by Counselor Carlton and seconded by Counselor Woodbury. Kevin Rock, Larry, you have the floor.
Thank you, Deputy Warden, and good morning, Council. I'll just, I'll kind of walk through some of the highlights of this report. So this report outlines the high-level budget assumptions for council's consideration and direction for the 2021 draft budget. A corporate budget overview and background will be presented on November 26, 2020, and so provide further information to to council on the overall 2021 budget and the funding requirements. And then what's being proposed here is that Committee of the Whole, a budget review meeting day similar to last year, will be held on January 29, 2021. And then if everything goes well, we would present a revenue and expenditures budget bylaw then on February 11th on 2021 for council's adoption. I'm gonna highlight some of the general assumptions and then the COVID assumptions that we, where staff are proposing to build into the budget. So under general assumptions, we're gonna base, based on historical trends, our annual assessment growth will use an estimated 1.4% growth. That's based on the previous five-year average. We'll, we'll look at that and we'll look at when the impact returns a role, we'll, we'll adjust that for, but for our starting position, we'll start with, with the average. Supplementary taxation to be estimated based on historical trends and impacts preliminary new assessment forecasts that they provide, none of any write-offs based on historical. Insurance costs, we've, but we're increasing by 2% for 2021. I've reached out to our provider on this and am waiting for information back. I have some concerns about insurance, what we're hearing in the market. But that is where we're starting right now, but so that, that number could change once I hear more. But that's what we're, we're building, what we've recommended to staff right currently. Utility costs will be projected based on the industry projections and as well LES, AMO's business services commodity cost projections. We use LES's natural gas and electricity, bulk procurement processes, so we'll, we'll look to them for help with that. Gas and diesel, well, projected cost reductions here based on the current market conditions and the concurrent consumption levels. Salaries and benefits are to be budgeted based on current negotiated contracts, the non-union, the council compensation to be based on the compensation formulas that councils approved and/or the current union negotiated contracts. Provincial funding to be assumed to continue at the current known and committed levels, including any announced funding increases and decreases. Costs of providing provincially mandated services are to be based on ministry regulations and guidelines and will be adjusted to reflect any base funding annual adjustments. We're continuing the recommendation included in the 2016 asset management plan where the recommendations increase tax revenues by 1% each year for the next 15 years solely for the purpose of phasing in full funding for our tax-funded asset classes, and that was covered in our asset management plan. An updated asset management plan is required under the REG regulation to come to council by July 1st, 2021. So staff is currently working on that. So you should see that in 2021, an updated asset management plan. As well, our assumption, we're gonna continue to use our building condition assessments and our reserve fund analysis as a tool to provide for maintenance and replacement costs in, in the budget for our assets. The healthcare initiative funding will continue to transfer to reserve that half of 1% of the county levy for a contribution for, for capital construction projects of hospitals. In regards to COVID assumptions, long-term care staffing levels will be budgeted to continue based on the current ministry directives or any new directives we receive and regulations prior to the budget. Personal protective equipment to remain at the current levels and, and project to continue through 2021. The municipal operating funding, phase one funding of $3 million that we received to support our 2020 COVID-19 operating costs and pressures that were received in August. That will be used to offset any COVID-related impacts in 2020, and what's left, we will show as a transfer to reserve, and then we'll bring that back and, and utilize that funding to offset the costs in the 2021 budget. Training, conferences and travel expenses for 21, 2021 to be reflective of the reduction of these costs based on the increased use of video conferencing. Investment income to remain low, reduction, the investment income will reduce the transfer to the one-time funding reserve. Whereas for the policy, any revenue that is budgeted that exceeds 1% of the levy is to be placed in the one-time funding reserve for non-recurring expenditures. The staff will continue to monitor budget assumptions based on the most current information we got. So if we receive new information from the ministry or changes happen, we'll try to, we'll adjust the budgets based on the best known information we have. There's a list of departmental-specific assumptions. I wasn't going to go into that this morning, but if there's questions on that, I can, I can try to answer those. On the budget timelines, as I stated, we, we'd hoped we maybe come back to having this budget reviewed by council in December, but due to the impact of COVID and the effects this pandemic's had on, on the services and staff time, we're proposing that, that the budget review day be on January 29th, and then hopefully come back with a budget bylaw in February. Budget development, there's a section in the report describes how we, we build the budget, how it's reviewed, how the assumptions are established in the timelines, and then as well, the layout of the budget documents, staff are not proposing any major changes to, to these budget presentations that, so it'll be similar to the 2021. Maybe some formatting and some possible changes, the breakdown of the functions, we, we had broken the functions down into like four major functions. We maybe break out long-term care, for example, and paramedic services to be on their own, when they're such significant services, so, and so you can never have budget impacts, so. And then I had the touch to the, of this is a, was the, last year's 2020 budget summary and 2020 budget details report, just for your information of what those were, and as well as the budget timeline, which, like I said, builds towards bringing a report in the end of November of what the budget is looking like, and as well then having this budgeted, the 2021 draft budgeted, provided to council in early January, and then our Committee of the Whole budget session on January 29th. So that is my report. If you can try to answer any questions or.
Thank you, Kevin. Counsel, any questions?
Counselor Body.
Go ahead, Counselor Body.
Thanks. So yeah, question for Kevin. I note that you're assuming a 2% increase for insurance. Are we at a renewal stage? Oh, and so I'm just renewed, and it's a 30% increase that we're getting spanked with, which we're probably all going to get hit with, and where are we at in the process of the county?
Kevin?
Yes, I, we went out to market last, last year, and that we moved away from Frank Collins, which, who's now intact. But, and so we've moved to March, so I have reached out to, they're to provide us with an update on this early, so I haven't got that back, Counselor Body, yet. So I'm in a dialogue with them, but I'm hearing similar concerns that you're raising here. I was on a long-term, administrative long-term care funding meeting yesterday, and a representative from Larnet, he said their insurance is going up 25%. So this is flagged right now, and just, I guess, for our initial assumptions, we've thrown this number out, but that, I will update this based on the information I get, and then I'll bring that back to council too for direction, then if, if, for where you want to go with it, if you want to go back out to market or whatever, but I, you know, it's, we're hearing even some, some businesses are even having trouble getting insurance right now as well, so it's, it's kind of concerning what's going on in the market.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, anyone else?
Counselor Millen.
Counselor Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden. Kevin, I'm wondering, in terms of transportation services, do you think the pandemic would have any or may have some impact on our capital, or our ability to, to build capital items or spend in that region?
That's a, a good question. The senior manager talked about, we've been reviewing our capital projects this year, and what hasn't, for example, what hasn't got done in 2020 due to like long-term care, they couldn't do some things inside the home, same with our housing buildings, and how much can they carry forward and actually accomplish next year with their current staff levels and what is available in the marketplace for contractors? And as well, like you said, the price increases we're seeing on lumber, for example, and stuff, so. Yeah, I, roads, I don't, what we saw this year has been fairly, has been good returns, but what does 2021 hold on? Yeah, it's, we're looking at, and I guess we've asked staff to revisit their numbers, Counselor Millen, but that's where we're at with this.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. I, I don't envy your road, road ahead of you, but I have full confidence.
Thank you.
I don't see any others, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay, so maybe then I will call the question. Is there anyone opposed to the motion before us to receive, to adopt the assumptions and to include those assumptions in the draft, or sorry, and to approve the draft budget schedule? Any opposed? Seeing none, I'll say that is Carrie. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 5B, Youth and Diversity Report. I believe that we have, oh, that is going to be moved by Counselor Carlton and seconded by Counselor Woodbury. And I believe we have Jacinda and Melissa, or just Melissa?
We have both, Jacinda and Melissa are here, but I'm gonna do a quick introduction for them because you haven't met Melissa yet. She is our newest recruit in local economic development for the Local Immigration Partnership.
I've met Melissa.
Yes, you have, yes, but the rest of council, we wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity, and because Melissa and Jacinda, this is really their work, it's important that they are the ones who are gonna tell you about it. So just by way of a very quick introduction to the report, this is the follow-up from the notice of motion that Counselor Desai brought back on July 9th. And our apologies that it has taken this long to get it here, but we were just on the cusp of launching the Local Immigration Partnership, and we wanted to be able to not talk about it hypothetically, but actually talk about what's now happening. So we've put together this report to talk about all of the initiatives that have come to fruition over the past couple of years. In 2017, we really started to see a shift, and in 2018, we made it through Economic Development Department with the hiring of Jacinda as an Economic Development Officer specifically focused on people attraction and retention. So that was a really big shift in economic development, and that has carried through to today and going forward into the future. So like I mentioned, we've been working on many projects with our community partners since 2017, and now with the Local Immigration Partnership, we have a program going forward for the next three to five years at least. So it's a, it's a good moment to not have the, the short-term, quick projects that we're typically used to, where we get a pilot something, and then it ends, and we pilot again, and it ends. Now we actually have a long-term commitment. So without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Melissa and Jacinda, who will take you through the report.
Excellent. Welcome, ladies.
Good morning, Council. I better take over before Savannah gives away my whole presentation. So the last time I stood in front of Gray County Council was to provide an overview of the New to Gray Initiative. A lot has happened since then in this region. So I believe, I do believe that the New to Gray Initiative created a platform for regional municipal involvement on addressing newcomer needs. With funding from the province, we were able to dedicate time and energy into building the foundation of welcoming communities and increase the partnerships and, and the awareness to aid in the retention and attraction of newcomers. So supporting the successful integration newcomers into our neighborhoods and labor market became really a, a big focus, and with our local partner champions created kind of that pathway for so many other initiatives. So through workshops, a regional forum, research, ongoing discussions, and truly stronger partnerships, we are continually building our capacity to welcome newcomers and increasing community awareness on the benefits of newcomers coming and staying in Gray County. A new partnership, a new partnership with the Rural Employment Initiative in Peel helped promote Gray County to immigrants living in, in GTA and looking to relocate to, to a rural community. So through information sessions, bus tours, and participation in our, three of our regional job fairs, Gray County is now seen as a welcoming community with employment opportunities and a really strong network of support. Currently, Gray County sits on AMO's Municipal Immigration Committee, and through this municipalities meet with both provincial and federal representatives on the topic of immigration and provide that insight into our local needs and of our rural municipalities. There was a regional forum in 2018 on newcomer integration, which brought together multiple stakeholder, multiple stakeholders that represented, you know, five counties together and brought us together to discuss kind of the best practices and actionable strategies in attraction, retention, and integration activities. Our work in supporting newcomers did not go unnoticed. In 2019, the Pathways to Prosperity invited Gray Bruce as one of the five rural communities to consult with on challenges and best practices in attracting, retaining newcomers in rural communities. So P2P Pathways to Prosperity then submitted a public report to both federal and provincial governments, and it was called Beyond the Big City: How Small Communities Across Canada Can Attract and Retain Newcomers. So it was really this partnership and this report that was a catalyst to Gray Bruce's region, a catalyst for Gray Bruce's region to apply for settlement services and local immigration partnership projects to support our newcomers. You, I'll let Melissa take over here.
Good morning, Council. Thank you for having me today. I'm really excited to introduce myself as the coordinator for this really exciting initiative, the Gray Bruce Local Immigration Partnership, and so I'm just here today to provide a bit of an introduction and introduce myself as well. So thank you for having me. As many of you know, Gray and Bruce Counties partnered together in their fund, in their application for funding for a local immigration partnership, and they were successful in this funding application and have been fully funded for this initiative through Immigration, Refugees, and Citizenship Canada. As Savannah mentioned, this is a three-to-five-year project, so we have received full funding for that full term, which is really exciting. The initiative in Gray and Bruce will address the isolation of newcomers in our large geographic area, and we'll do this by increasing our capacity for coordination, connection, and collaboration of our service providers and businesses and community partners to increase our capacity, our capacity for fostering a welcoming community. And so for numerous reasons, Gray and Bruce decided to partner in this together, but one of those reasons is that many of our service providers and community partners either provide services to or cover both counties in terms of their services and their support. So as you will see further into the presentation, when I provide an update as to the, some of the partners that we have, you'll notice that that's a common theme in that these service providers and organizations cover both Gray and Bruce Counties. So for those of you that aren't familiar with what a local immigration partnership maybe is, I would just like to give a brief introduction. So they're community-based partnerships that support planning around the needs of newcomers, and specifically, they're partnerships that, one, foster an approach to engage settlement programs and other institutions to integrating newcomers. Two, they support community-based knowledge sharing and local strategic planning, and they also improve the coordination of effective services that facilitate immigrant settlement and integration. So what you'll notice from that is that LIPS don't provide direct service to our newcomer community, but we are fortunate in that our local YMCA has also received funding through IRCC or Immigration, Refugees, and Citizenship Canada to provide settlement and language services directly to our newcomers. So rather, the LIP initiative focuses on supporting with the three Cs, so the coordination, connection, and collaboration of our businesses, organizations, and service providers, who are the ones supporting our newcomer community. So the LIP or Local Immigration Partnership has a partner council, and so we have multiple stakeholders that will be involved in our partnership. And the council ensures that we, we have the multiple stakeholders at the table together, collaborating and connecting to build our capacity and share resources in order to better support our newcomer communities and, and foster welcoming communities. So I would just like to provide you a brief kind of glimpse into some of the partners that we do have, and I'm not gonna name them specifically, but kind of some of the groups that we have involved currently. So on our partnership council, we do have representation from both the county and municipal level. We have our school boards represented, we have post-secondary represented, we have labor market planning board representation, we have legal and police services representation, we have healthcare, adult learning and language training, we have our employment service providers, as well as our settlement services providers, we have our community organizations, some really great organizations that we've partnered with and look forward to working with going forward. And again, that's an example of many of them cover both Bruce and Gray Counties, so they're a great asset to our council, as well as businesses and business associations. So by bringing everybody together, we'll really be able to build our capacity and work together to be able to foster these welcoming communities. And then just in close, I wanted to provide you some next steps and accomplishments that we've already, we've already experienced. So three weeks ago, on September 15th, we held our, one of our first, or sorry, our first partnership council meeting. It was as we were building our partnership council, we, we held this first introduction meeting to introduce some of our partners to one another, as well as to the LIP initiative in general. And so at that, at that council meeting, we had just over 30 partners in attendance, and since that event just three weeks ago, we've actually grown our partnership council to almost 50 representatives. So it's really gaining traction, and a lot of our partners, our community partners and service providers and businesses and municipalities are excited about this initiative, and you can see how quickly it's grown. So we're really excited to be here and to continue this work. We're in the very early stages of this work. I came on board in July, but we're really excited to move forward, and as Savannah said, we're here for three to five years. And so I also just wanted to highlight, as you'll see from the report, two of our big focuses this year for GBLIP, Gray Bruce Local Immigration Partnership, in addition to building our partnership council and starting to collaborate in those terms, two of our other big focuses will be to brand our Gray Bruce Local Immigration Partnership, to provide a strong brand to represent our work and the partners that are involved, and as well, we are working to develop our settlement strategy and action plan. So these contracts have been awarded to, to different consultants for each project, and so we're working with these consultants currently in the development of both, and we look forward to bringing the settlement strategy and action plan forward to council in March for your consideration. Jacinda?
Melissa has truly done a really great job in the short time she's been here, so I commend her for the time and effort she's put into the LIP program. I just wanted to just talk briefly about youth and retention in this area. You know, we continue to strategize on youth retention in Gray County. Through the Young Professionals Network events, we brought together young people to increase social and business connections, again reinforcing the importance of social capital. At the same time, events such as these highlight businesses and communities within Gray County, it's a perfect, a perfect example is one of our newcomers from South Africa was opening a jujitsu martial arts studio and was looking for another instructor to partner with. It was at one of the YPN events where we were able to connect him with one of our newcomers from Brazil, who instructs the same martial arts practice, and now they are in the business together. The Business Enterprise Center, some summer company program geared towards 15 to 29, looking to start their own summer businesses, that is still ongoing. Partis, they, BEC participates in speaking engagements on youth retention and partners with local organizations such as Launchpad, Oh Yeah, Community Foundation Gray Bruce, Georgian College, and the school boards to ensure that youth feel connected and understand the opportunities out there and consider staying in our region. Recently, BEC partnered with Settlement Services to deliver a workshop on fundamentals of running a new business for newcomers. And then my role as attraction retention people is dedicated to, you know, those efforts, and with our community partners listed in the dependencies, we will have a stronger impact within our region. We had created an attraction retention campaign in 2019 to roll out into 2020, but with the current pandemic, we are accommodating for a shift to 2021, which I'm sure you're all aware of, and I just wanted to say, you know, thank you for your time, and I really hope that next time we present to council, we're standing in front of you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Jacinda, and thank you, Melissa, and congratulations on your successful first presentation to council. Big smile on your face, I'm sure. And thank you as well, Savannah. Counsel, are there any questions?
Counselor Desai.
Counselor Desai.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Warden. As, as Savannah stated at the start, this, this report has come out of the notice motion that I brought forward, and I just want to say thank you very much for it, and, and I can totally appreciate delaying it to get, to get real data on the LIP. I sat at the, on the LIP meeting, on the, on the first LIP meeting that they had a few weeks ago, and quite, quite frankly, it's an amazing group of people that's around that table, and last night, and I, I meant to send Melissa an email about this, but it completely slipped my mind, but last night, Gray Highlands Council passed a motion appointing me to be the Gray Highlands representative on the LIP, so I'm really looking forward to that. Initially, when I first given my notice of motion, it was, it was to set up a, a task force that dealt with youth and diversity retention and promotion. Having read the report, I think staff's doing a great job. It's already a priority for staff to, to attract and retain and promote diversity and, and youth within our, our community. So I don't think it would, it would serve staff well to have that task force. It would, in fact, it would be a, a negative use of that time. But nonetheless, I just want to thank staff for bringing this report and taking the time to do a, a very detailed report, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Welcome, Counselor Desai. Madam Clerk, anyone else?
CAO Windgrove.
Go ahead.
You're on mute, Kim.
Okay, there we are. Thank you. Before we leave the Economic Development Group, I, I don't know if some of you are probably subscribers to our social media. There was a posting launch today for Thanksgiving thanking our small businesses, and with council's indulgence, I'd like Savannah to introduce that, and, and if you don't mind, just take in a quick look. I think it's really, really well done.
Yeah, Savannah?
Thank you. The video, it, it definitely pulls at our hearts. It is something that we worked with our communications team and economic development and tourism to recognize just how amazing our small businesses have been. From the beginning of this pandemic, we have had a theme of resilience all the way through, and never more is that becoming more apparent than as we kind of waver with where we are with all the unknowns still to come. And it's a compilation of videos. And it's a compilation of videos that happened over the rediscover gray campaign that Olivia has put together for us. And she's been such a wonderful welcome addition and asset to the team to be able to do this and fully narrated it. So we also have radio ads going with the same message. Because it's, to us, it's really important to say thank you to our businesses and to our residents. Because our businesses are going above and beyond to change the way that they function and the way that they do their daily lives. To make it better for us so that they can stick around. And our residents are going above and beyond to be able to support our businesses and keep them here until we can welcome our, our droves of tourists back. And until we are out of this pandemic. So it's a, it's a dual message and just a wonderful video. So I think Rob has it available to be able to show. And thank you so much, Kim, for the opportunity because it, we're very proud of it.
Yes.
Are you seeing that okay?
Yes.
Gray County thanks you for supporting locally owned businesses this fall. Over the past seven months, our businesses have shown amazing resilience as they've adapted to serve you. This Thanksgiving takes some time to thank them for all their hard work. Choose to shop in our many downtown stores when buying seasonal supplies or gifts. And stock up for your Thanksgiving meal with delicious foods direct from local farms. Small businesses are the heart of our communities. Show them you care when you give thanks this fall.
Gray County, color it your way.
Thank you.
Very good, very good. Thank you for that. Counselor Millen, I believe you have a question.
Well, it was just a comment, and I just wanted to thank these young ladies for the work they've been doing. It's tremendously important for the future of our communities. And I'm, I'm just constantly amazed at the talent that we attract to this organization and the work they do. It's very important work, like I said, and I am thrilled to see that we're not just giving it lip service. Sorry, I couldn't resist. Thank you. I had to say it before Counselor decided.
Okay, anyone else? Right there. For the presentation, and I will now call the question on the motion, is there anyone opposed? That will be carried then. Thank you. How are we feeling? Good still? We can keep pressing on or does anyone need a break? I'm seeing nods for pressing on. Excellent. We'll go to item five C then. The ATV and side by side request, that is being moved by Counselor Mackey and seconded by Counselor Hutchison. And is it Sarah that's got the floor?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Can everyone, trying to share my screen here, can everyone see that?
No, we.
Okay, hold on. Oh, here we go. Yeah, share. How's that? Okay. So good morning and thank you, everyone. This is my first council Zoom presentation, so bear with me here. And this was a rather lengthy report that I wrote, so I thank you for taking the time to read it. I will try and keep my presentation brief. As brief as I can. I am a planner, remember. On, on July 23rd, at the committee of the whole meeting, there was a delegation that spoke from Duffering Gray ATV Club. And they requested that the county consider permitting a wider vehicle on the CP rail trail and the Harkaway Forest Track. Where they currently have permissions through agreements with the county. The current permitted width for ATVs in these areas is 54 inches. And the club was requesting an increase to 65 inches. This is a similar request that they had made back in 2016. That came before the Planning and Community Development Committee. As a result of that request among a, a number of other requests that they brought forward at the same time. The Planning and Community Development Committee directed staff to complete the recreational trails master plan. Or the RTMP. The RTMP is designed to comprehensively address and give clear guidance to staff and council when considering proposals of this nature. So I won't go into great detail about the RTMP, but basically when we get these types of requests. The RTMP developed criteria or evaluation questions to help allow staff to assess each request on an individual basis. So these three questions are, is the new use consistent with the long term preservation of the forest and land? Is the new use compatible with existing uses and infrastructure in the area where it's proposed? And is enforcement an issue? And does the county have the resources to provide adequate enforcement for the protection of the forest or trail if the news is allowed? So as a result of the RTMP, the allowance of side by sides was considered up to a maximum width of the widest permitted ATV. Because they had, one of the requests that they had previously not had permission for was to actually have side by sides on the trail. And based on this criteria, staff believed that it would be. Permitted or could be permitted as long as it could be accommodated by the existing infrastructure available. However, due to the industry and the direction that the sport is moving, and as we heard from Duffering Gray in their presentation. The restriction, this restriction of size of vehicles. Is not, is not what their membership is going towards. Many of the vehicles that are being preferred by those users are the larger vehicles up to the 65 inches. And hence why the club brought forward the report. So if we evaluate this request based on the criteria, which is essentially what we did. Is, so the first question would be, is the new use consistent with the long term preservation of the forest and land? The new use of larger vehicles would require significant trail upgrades, including widening of gates, trail surfaces, culverts, et cetera. In some of the trail, in some areas, the trails actually, the truck cannot be widened due to geography, steep slopes or other infrastructure barriers. The existing gates are, are designed and intended for vehicles no greater than 54 inches. To prevent larger vehicles accessing the, accessing the trail, which was an issue prior to installing the gates. The widening of the gates essentially makes them obsolete in preventing trespassing by other non permitted vehicles. Non permitted vehicles have a greater ability to damage the trail as it is not designed for them. With, with speed, things like speed and structure, et cetera. And it will provide more access for more vehicles to trespass on private property. Now, this year during ATV season, we did enlist the assistance of OPP. As well as the West Gray Police to help with patrolling. OPP patrolled weekly during the ATV season. And West Gray Police patrolled occasionally with the club itself. Staff as well as our contract staff, we just simply don't have the ability to patrol the trail, nor do we have the qualifications to do so. As far as I understand, the police were only patrolling for. Violations related to the Highway Traffic Act, which was speeding and careless. But as a result of the staffing limitations and the limitations of the police. Services, there is a potential loss for protecting our property and our neighbor's property that abut the trail. So the second evaluation. Question or criteria was, is the news compatible with existing uses and infrastructure? That's. We're in the area where it's proposed. So as, as noted in Duffering Gray's presentation in July, as well as what I just noted in our last question. Criteria. There would be significant upgrades required to the trail itself, additional signage and related infrastructure. In order to accommodate the larger vehicles. We did a desktop exercise. That would give us a number to estimate the cost of what it would. What it would be to grade and widen the trail where it's possible, up to a maximum width of 12 feet from the standard eight feet. And that was estimate, sorry, an estimate of just over $15,000 per kilometer. There's approximately 62 kilometers from Gray Road 18 to Dundalk. Which would put the cost for widening the trail alone, just over $900,000. This obviously was done on a desk, as a desktop exercise. It's based on the cost scenarios for the last three years that we did trail grading. We divided the kilometers based on the total project cost. And then we divided that, that would have been for an eight foot wide trail. And then we divided that by eight and multiplied it by 12 to get what it would cost for 12. And then we took the average. So it's, it's a little bit of math there, but it was basically kind of just to give us a rough estimate. It doesn't include things like tree clearing, earth excavation, rock removal, et cetera. Those things also need to be evaluated if, if this was something that council did want us to consider. It's also worth noting that we did not take into consideration the increased cost that it would, maintenance would be. So that would increase the annual cost of maintenance as well. With, with regards to gates, the estimated cost to. Modify a gate is $300. And if we need to replace or install a new gate, that's $1,700. With a total, I'm not going to go into all the numbers and where they all are. But the total estimated cost for gate upgrades would be $36,000. In addition to that, there was seven bridges identified in this span of trail. As well as five very narrow areas that just simply wouldn't be able to be widened. And the recommendation would be to sign these areas if possible. And that was a total cost of $2,400. We did not evaluate the cost of widening any of the bridges. We just knew that would be a cost prohibitive number. Using, for example, the recent, recent project of Culver 21 that had an estimated. Well, total project cost of over $700,000. So we just knew that that wasn't something that we would even consider. So the option for those areas would be to sign them. So that brings the total cost to just under a million dollars to, to, to complete upgrades for this, for this proposed use. If, if we did not widen the trails. But allowed for the use, there would be some significant safety concerns that come along with multi use trails. Specifically, the interaction with motorized versus non motorized users. Without completing these upgrades to accommodate the larger vehicle. It's also arguable that the larger vehicle increases the incompatibility with other trail users on the trail. However, if committee wishes to proceed with the larger size, public consultation is definitely recommended. With other trail user groups. So obviously modification would be a necessity to accommodate a wider vehicle. And would indicate that the proposed use isn't compatible with the existing infrastructure. So the third evaluation criteria deals with enforcement. And again, we touched on it briefly. But just to summarize, some of the main complaints that we receive regarding ATV use generally fall under. Trespassing, noise, riding, excess of speed, dust generation. And basically like them being on trails that they're not supposed to, which I guess is another way of saying trespassing. In the past, when we've had problem areas, we have enlisted our contract staff from Gray Sobel to monitor problem areas. But, but we have limited resources to extend beyond this service. And they certainly don't have the skills or, or the qualifications, I should say, to enforce any kind of regulation. That said, we did have assistance from local police services in this regard, but they're limited to when they can go out. ATV wardens are generally out two or more times during the week, based on how they are reporting to us. But again, they're out to, and they're not out to enforce, they're out to educate and assist. And they again, don't have qualifications, nor would we want to put them at, at any kind of risk to trying, trying to enforce anything. So those are the, the three evaluation requests. There were a few other points raised in the Duffering Gray presentation that staff wanted to touch upon. Significant changes to the Highway Traffic Act occurred related to this in late 2015. And in 2000, and that basically changed the, the Highway Traffic Act to allow for an off road vehicle, which includes a side by side or an ATV. To be permitted on a road, provided the municipality has a bylaw. That permits the use. So in 2016, Gray County did pass a bylaw that allowed for these types of use on all accounting, all of our county roads, saving except for a few. Mainly in urban areas. Due to the increased size, it may be more appropriate that these larger vehicles are directed to roads as opposed to trails. In the scenario, they're still able to access all the amenities that they desire, as well as getting to and from their various trail locations. The increased size results, does result in incompatibility issues with other users and the existing infrastructure. We also, whoops, we also did some research regarding what other municipalities were doing outside of the county. We, we had, we did struggle with trying to find good comparators. The main comparator that we found was Bruce County. Bruce County does allow for side by sides. They are a multi use trail, however, their trail width is wider and they do have gates that do allow for this. Our average width is, well, it, the range is 2.3 meters to 5.5 meters and averaging 3.24 meters. Bruce County has a consistent main line from 3.6 to 4.3 meters, just to give an example. The other comparators that we used. Were predominantly a motorized use. So although they were a good resource to determine widths and infrastructure needs, they weren't a good comparator for a recreational multi use trail. The next thing that we wanted to touch upon was emergency response time. This was a big concern that the. Club raised. Many of the lower, lower tier fire departments have a side by side in their fleet to assist with emergencies. The gates impeding on emergency time was, was a significant concern, specifically the time taken to open the gate. All of the, all of the departments that we discussed this with really had no concerns with the, the time needed to open the gate in the event of emergency. In most cases, they would take roads to get to the closest access point. And if they couldn't just drive around it, then they would unlock it. But it didn't, it, of all three that we heard back from, there was no concerns regarding this. The other thing that we wanted to raise was the trail use in urban areas. This was raised when we had some initial conversations with the county's insurer. And they indicated that they would be encouraging the trend of reducing motorized uses in urban areas. Where obviously there is an increase in use by non motorized users. We can see this is already in effect, you know, in sound. And that's why that, that area of the trail is restricted to non motorized uses. At least in the summer months, because they do allow snowmobiles in the winter. With the changes to the Highway Traffic Act and the Off Road Vehicles Act, it would indicate that these types of vehicles are being recognized as more appropriate for roadways. Finally, with, with regards to accessibility, although the trail isn't accessible. We do know that there are users that have limited mobility and, and accessibility aids that can work on the trail. We do know that they, they do get used from time to time by those types of users. So we thought it would be beneficial. To, to reach out to a resource that we have called the Ontario Network of Accessibility Professionals or ONAP. It's largely comprised of accessibility coordinators that work for municipalities or schools, colleges and universities. They indicated if there was. Somebody with limited mobility that had an accessibility aid. When meeting a motorized use on the trail. Or a wider motorized use than has already permitted. In areas where they should be pulling over, it could be problematic. And so there's, we should introduce at minimum. A certain distance apart pullover areas. And they had a, a number that they, that was a regulated number of 30 meters. Which on a trail like ours is essentially, we might as well be considering widening it if we're going to be allowing a larger vehicle on it. There was also the point raised about. Side by sides being used by those with, with limited ability, limited mobility. Those who responded from ONAP had indicated that it wasn't something that they had heard of before. However, it could be something unique to our area. That, that those with limited mobility are using side by sides to access. That that those with limited mobility are using side-by-sides to access trails via trails in nature this way. So we did also want to touch upon the contributions of Dufferin Gray ATV Club. Staff have, they've been an excellent partner to work with. Staff appreciate the relationship that we have and we have built with the club over the last number of years. And I just wanted to highlight some of the the big projects that they've helped us out with. That includes. Along Dufferin Gray ATV Club, along with the local snowmobile club, raised funds in 2019. For a portion of a bridge replacement that was just north of Markdale. That was that was significant for us. And then again, in 2015, they applied for funding through the National Trails Coalition. In order to pay for the replacement of a lot of the gates that were still having an older model on them. And that that was significant, they that we were we were awarded $15,000, sorry, they were awarded $15,000. And with a total project cost of 37,500, so they paid the difference of 22,500 from their club fund. In addition to this, their community involvement is significant. They do annual fundraisers multiple times a year. They also donated $6,000 towards the Culver 21 project and they are simply a wonderful asset to our community. So then we get to the consideration. Pay a part of the of of my report and basically it's do we allow for them based on the RTMP evaluation? Or do we? Do we not allow for them based on the RTMP requirements or do we allow for the use? And although staff are sympathetic to the current direction that the ATV market is moving towards with regard to the type of vehicles that are preferred on the market. And that their membership is using, based on the existing infrastructure, the cost to upgrade and the limitations with enforcement. We're recommending that the larger vehicle not be permitted at this time. And that the the size remains at 54 inches. It has been demonstrated that there are alternatives to using the CP rail trail and there are significant cost increases. Sorry, lost my spot in in with potential risks to managing the trail and therefore. It would seem appropriate that the county maintains the existing limit of size for 54 inches. Based on the current conditions of the trail and based on the current contract staffing resources regarding employment. And that's that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. I see Councilor Mill has a question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Deputy Warden, before we move to questions, I wonder if our mover and seconder would just confirm. Which of the resolutions they are supporting, whether it's staff recommendation. Or permission, just so we have a a motion to move forward with.
In fact, Madam Clerk, I'm going to suggest that the motion reflect the staff recommendation. And so we are really looking for a mover and seconder for the recommendation to refuse and to find alternatives. If you are. Wanting to have it approved, then you would vote against this particular motion. We'll come back to that in a second though, but just to confirm with Councilors Mackey and Hutchison. Are you okay with having your? Names be associated with the moving and seconding the staff recommendation to not approve?
Mover is not prepared to support the staff recommendation, Deputy Warden.
Then I'm going to be looking for another mover, moved by Counselor Burley. Counselor Hutchison, are you okay with having your name be associated with seconding?
Yes, I'm fine with that, thank you.
Okay, now we will go to discussion and questions. Counselor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden. Comprehensive report, Sarah, thank you very much for all of that. I think it's a little over the top on some of the numbers and the suggestions that you've made there regarding the width. But one particular question I might have, and it was it's related to the gates at the access points. How many of the access points are the gates simply a decoration and most of the? Users of the trail go around the gates?
Sorry, I'm trying to unmute here. I know that I had this somewhere and I believe Morgan is on the line too. I don't know if Morgan knows that exact number. I'm just trying to see quickly here. We can. I can get that information for you.
Well, I guess my point is that there are access points where it's essentially not restricted to any vehicle. In terms of size, because you can simply drive around the gates. I've seen many of them like that. So I guess what I'm suggesting is that the the size, and I think we can all agree that size does matter. But the size of the vehicle is not restricted even now because of the gates. So I I I'm not sure that the size of the vehicle is really a an impediment to the use of the trail. That's my point.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Mill, and you had to go there, didn't you? Any other questions?
Yes, I have Counselor Desai, Warden McQueen and Counselor Mackey.
Okay, Counselor Desai.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Warden. I had a a concerned citizen reach out to me. They they went through the report and. They were concerned with the staff recommendation mainly because. And I think Sarah mentioned it, that side-by-side users are a growing number of trail users now. And it it makes sense and this is what the the citizens said to me, it makes sense to make the trail safer for them to use as well. Further, I mean. And Counselor Millen brought it up, but there's people who people are already using the trail inside by side. Whether we allow them or not. So having said that, if people are going to use it regardless, should we not? As the county endeavor to make it safer for those people? And my question through you, Mr. Deputy Warden to Sarah is if we continue down this road of refusing. To allow the side-by-side. Would we be, would we be putting ourselves in 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 a possibly litigious situation if? A user that's not permitted happens to be on the trail and causes a mishap and causes injury either to themselves or to another user? Would we be liable for that? And I think I already know the answer because of joint and several liability and the procession that municipalities have deep pockets. So. You know, I I don't know if Sarah can address those concerns of mine, that we could avoid some liability there. I I stand firmly in the favor of over a period of time, making the trail safer for all user. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Mr. Deputy Warden. Question I can answer. I think that might be a Michael question or.
One second, Sarah, if I might, Madam Clerk.
I actually wonder if CAO Wingrove wanted to speak to a couple of those points.
Sarah, do you mind if we have?
Not at all.
Thanks, everyone, thank you, Mr. Chair. As we've already discussed earlier this morning, we do have. Some concerns with insurance and how the insurance industry is changing. I think that. You know, to Counselor Desai's question, that does probably bear some further discussions with them as well as some considerations by. Our county solicitor. If council directs, we can certainly take. Some additional time to investigate further and see if there's a way that we could actually. Get some specifics around what we'd be looking at. I think we are allowing side-by-sides now. This is a question of whether or not we're going to allow larger side-by-sides on the trail. And you know. As much as we have really great partners and we're really glad to see people using the the trails in the forests. Our trails are the size that they are. And I think we we all need to make these decisions with a full. Assessment of of the risks involved and the and the expense of involved. And I think that's what Sarah and Randy have tried to provide you with some sense of today.
Whoops, it would help if I unmuted. Sarah, anything to add? And I do acknowledge Counselor Potter, I did see your hand.
I I think Kim has has covered it quite well and I was I was basically going to defer to. Those that have a higher expertise in the litigious area than I do.
Okay, Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and and I guess now just a general comment to County Council. I'm not suggesting that we undertake the entire upgrade to the trail at one go. A a million dollars, that would be close to 2% rate increase in our taxes. I'm not suggesting we do it all in one go, but we could look at a phased-in approach where we start doing that work. But again, I guess that that depends on whether this motion passes or or is defeated. So I'll wait to make these further comments on that until we get into the the next motion if we do get there.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Desai, Warden McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden, and you're doing a great job, so thank you for all the work you're doing there. So certainly reading through this report last night and I know this has been something that has been. On our minds for for quite some time and we certainly have the trail system, which is we're grateful to be able to have that system, that trail availability. So a couple of things. I I I know it's a it's a growing industry from ATVs to side-by-sides and also off-road vehicles that certainly is continues to grow. A few, a few comments. Certainly with ATVs or a single-person use vehicle, there is those that do have the upseat. That does allow two individuals on those. Vehicles and but more so with the introduction or the the popularity of side-by-sides. It's become more where there are almost like a vehicle where they have a roof and a windshield and doors and stuff like that. And just like a half an hour ago here, we just had a big rain coming through. I can see why a lot more people are are going to that because they're more weather prone in the sense of the use. And certainly, I think from from what I understand from number users. From the Great Dufferin ATV Club is more of the senior riders have been going more that route. Probably for that those particular reasons of the comfort that that is has been warranted from those. I I guess I'm going to look at maybe could this motion be deferred? For the simple reason is I think it would be good and I and I know. The ATV club, more more specifically, the Great Dufferin ATV Club, has in the past put money toward gates and signage. And I understand that they are quite willing to help put costs or put money toward that upgrade. And certainly as Deputy Mayor Desai has said, is maybe there's a phased-in approach. And also the other question is, are there grants available from that aspect of upgrades? And and could they, I know from a tourism aspect through the ministry, Lisa McLeod has certainly echoed that. Certainly tourism and recreation and economic development are are high on on the agenda right now in the sense of of what's going on with COVID-19 and a number of points around that. Also, I understand that the the Great Dufferin ATV Club does provide $15 million worth of liability. For the use of that trail, which probably a lot of other users do not provide at all. So I guess going back to the part of controlling what we have. If you control something and and able to work with, you know, other providers or users that do have insurance. It's a lot better than having it a free-for-all and and not controlling it because, you know, it's it takes those one, those one situations where it ruins it for the rest because they're not part of that. And I think that's been a struggle with the the Great Dufferin ATV Club and and that's part of the the reasons that. You know, you you do have wardens and 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 that part of it. Certainly from a municipal side, as you know, from a lower tier, we have arenas, we have trails. I know a few years back, there was a lot of liability. I think you maybe mentioned it the other day, Mr. Deputy Warden, about bike parks and the the the. The liability around that is, yeah, certainly, we all always have to to wear risks of of, you know, what risk we want to, you know. Sort of absorb and and where it's too highly, highly, high risk that we feel that it's it's not worth the risk versus the, you know, the the cost and and everything like that. And I do know that, you know, over the years with regards to arenas, we have been, you know, through our insurance providers, certainly the due diligence of checklist. Make sure we check this off, make sure we check that off. Are we doing the best we can do to 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 limit our liability? And and that's something that we would still need to continue, continue moving forward. So I guess, Mr. Deputy Warden, I'm looking at moving a motion to defer this at this time. Simply to sort of maybe, and I want to thank Sarah and staff for bringing the report forward, just to give an opportunity to maybe tease out some of those points about the cost. What could the club provide? Are there other avenues on 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 those things? And I I would really like as a as an individual, I I've never actually really been on the trail. I don't know if there's drone footage or just something that would be an opportunity. You can't take a bus down the trail line, Mr. Deputy Warden, and 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 see that. But I think it, you know, sometimes visual would be also good and 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 I don't know if if that's something's possible. Some drone footage or something like that that could be available. Certainly with COVID-19, we, you know, from the distancing thing, we just can't all jump on something or whatever and 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 go for a ride. So at this time, Mr. Deputy Warden, I'm I'm moving a motion to defer it. If I lucky of having a seconder and just to sort of tease out a few more. Of the insurance part is what is a liability for us? Is there opportunities to partnering with the local club in the sense of funding and that kind? Is there a possibility of of phase in? Just I think it would be our due diligence, just to sort of get some more answers on that before we make the final decision at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Warden McQueen. With the guidance of our clerk, I'm going to deal with the motion to defer first, but we would need a seconder for that, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Seconded by Counselor Robinson. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, no, I I unmuted myself by mistake, my apologies.
No, no problem. So we have a mover and a seconder, any discussion on the motion to defer? I know that we had a list of speakers on the, excuse me, on the main motion, but.
I see, I see Counselor Mackey has a a comment and I I will just remind council that we have a motion to defer on the floor. So that's what the speaking needs to be related to.
Yeah, the motion to defer. So Counselor Mackey, are you wanting to speak on the motion to defer?
Thanks, Deputy Warden. I'll briefly speak on the motion to defer. I think we should make a decision today. The staff has spent a lot of time, there are two options. Option B actually looks into some of the additional, you know, option B is not saying we're approving the larger machines. It would just allow further information to come back for council to make that final decision such as. Appropriate funding, public consultation, a complete assessment of the project with actual costing or accurate costing. And a review with the county insurer. So I think if individuals are in support of wider ATVs, then we should be. Going along with option B and getting that work started today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Mackey. Are there any other speakers on the motion to defer?
Mr. Warden, point of order, just to say, is just is the comment that was just made. Option B isn't on the floor, so only option A is on the floor, so that was the reason I brought for the motion to defer.
Right. I agree. Any other speakers on the motion to defer? Then I will call the question. Is there anyone opposed to the motion to defer? I see one, two, three, Madam Clerk, I'm going to need your help.
I, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I see nine hands raised.
Okay, nine opposed. And I'm going to say, is there anyone in favor of the motion to defer? And I'm going to say, is there anyone in favor of the motion to defer? Just to be clear.
Mr. Warden, I'd like a recorded vote, please.
Okay.
Makes it easier. Okay, Counselor, so you're voting on the deferral? Counselor Mackey.
Oh.
No? Counselor Burley.
No.
Counselor Carlton.
No.
Warden McQueen.
Yes.
Counselor Desai.
In favor.
Counselor Patterson.
No.
Counselor Hicks.
Nay.
Counselor Clumpus.
No.
Counselor Kentner.
No.
Counselor Body.
No.
Counselor O'Leary.
Opposed.
Counselor Woodbury.
In favor.
Counselor Millen.
In favor.
Counselor Soever.
In favor.
Counselor Potter.
Opposed.
Counselor Robinson.
In favor.
Counselor Hutchinson.
In favor.
The motion to defer is lost 3453. So now we're back to the first motion, the staff's recommendation.
Now we're on the main motion, and I had two speakers on the main motion still, Counselor Mackey and then Counselor Potter.
Counselor... And Counselor Body.
And Counselor Body, okay. So Counselor Mackey.
Thanks once again, Deputy Warden, and through you to Sarah. The question you mentioned in your report that Bruce County is allowing the wider ATVs. So two parts to that question. Has Bruce County experienced any negative impacts since they introduced the wider ATVs? And secondly, did they spend any significant funds to accommodate wider ATVs?
Sarah?
I have to admit, I had some help with my research, and I was not the one that did the questioning about this. But I will certainly, I can certainly find out the answer for you and get back to you with a response from that with regard, so the question specifically was, are they experiencing any impacts with the larger, with the side-by-side use? And how the costing that they invested? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, you know, and, you know, additionally, you know, in the wintertime, we have, you know, our facilities are used by the snowmobile clubs, and two snowmobiles are able to pass one another on the trail. So I guess I have some question about the trail not being wide enough to accommodate ATVs. Like two snowmobiles, you know, are about four feet, each snowmobile is about four feet each, and they can pass one another, you know, on the trail. So I question why, you know, ATVs can't safely, or sorry, the larger side-by-sides can't also safely, you know, pass one another on our trails. Certainly spent a lot of time on the trails and have seen them used by bicyclists, walkers, snowshirts, snowmobiles, ATVs, and horseback riders. And generally, people are quite respectful of one another's needs on the trail. At least that's been my experience. I think it would be a mistake from a tourism perspective. For some of our seniors, it is one of the only ways they can't get on, you know, ATVs anymore. It's hard to climb on, and certainly, you know, the spouse to get onto just an ATV is difficult. So for our senior population, the side-by-sides have been, you know, a way to get out into the countryside and enjoy nature. So I certainly support option B, and will be voting against the motion that's on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Potter.
Thank you, Deputy Warden, and I have several points to make. The first is that it seems like every few years, whenever they want to sell a new batch of machines, they come up with a wider or some new feature, and I just wonder, you know, where will it end? We're getting bigger and bigger ATVs, and we're expected to ask our taxpayers to pay for bigger and bigger trails. I think the CIO said it earlier, our trails are what they are. We provide them for recreation, and I almost wonder at what point does it stop being a recreational trail and start being a road? Because these machines are getting bigger and bigger. I note that the average width of a car is about the same as for one of these vehicles. So I don't see that we're doing recreation anymore as much as providing a road. The question of liability, no matter what we do, we are liable. So if two side-by-sides crash into each other, we're still liable, whether we widened the trail or didn't. So they, I don't see that that is really an issue. We are going to be liable one way or the other. And finally, you know, we are looking ahead at a very difficult year, maybe two or three years. We don't have enough money for all the affordable housing we need. We don't have enough money for all the seniors housing we need. We don't have enough money for all the long-term care personnel that we need. We have to look at those before we start thinking about widening trails for wider ATVs, just so that the ATV companies can sell more machines. So that is my stand on it. I will be opposing this, or I will be supporting option A, I should say.
Thank you, Counselor Potter. Counselor Body.
Yeah, thank you. I've bicycled from On Sound to Proton Station, so I've done a big chunk of it. There are places that when an ATV comes along, even a side-by-side, that there is not a room on a bicycle to get out of the way. You know, you got to get up on the edge as they pass, and it's great to share. I was very much and continue to be very much in support of ATVs on the trails and the tourism. However, there are places that's just not wide enough unless you're going to widen the base and everything. You're going to be excluding bicyclers and other people that, you know, there's just some places you can't hide. There's not enough sort of, I don't know, what would you call it in the railway, side rail? So I'm opposed to this for now. I know that there are some side-by-sides that aren't fitting. You can get by. When you start getting bigger and bigger, not only are we running into expense, but it's making it more difficult for other users that are perhaps unrepresented in this conversation and their use of it. So I don't think we have to go wider to continue to support the club that has been a great club and very active and support ATV tourism, but I'm not supporting it going wider. So I'm going to support the motion that is on the table. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Soever.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, my concern is, as Ian's concerned, Counselor Body's concern is the safety aspect of going wider. Very familiar with ATVs and certainly, you know, the larger ones are easier to control, and we've gone to those in the mining industry as well because people had a tendency to flip the smaller ones a lot easier. And but that being said, I'm just wondering, from, we've heard earlier today that insurance companies are increasing their premiums and so on. Is there going to be a difference in what we're quoted for insurance as we allow larger, more powerful machines on the trail?
Sarah, are you able to answer this?
I could speak generally about it. We did have preliminary conversations with our insurer, and they indicated that a reassessment would need to be done by the insurance company to determine whether or not this would increase our premiums.
Thank you, Counselor Soever.
That's, well, that's why I voted to defer because I was hoping we could get that kind of information before we make a final decision, but, you know, it would be good to know.
Madam Clerk, I don't see anybody else. Do you have anyone?
Oh, yes. It's a popular topic. So I see CIO Wingrove, Director Schertz, Counselor O'Leary, and then Counselor Desai has a secondary.
Okay, why don't I go with Counselor O'Leary because maybe he will raise something that the staff can answer.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden. I just wanted to comment that I think it's very telling that bridges were not evaluated in this process. I think the costs of doing the bridges, it really doesn't matter what you do with the trails. If you don't have the bridges to handle the side-by-sides, so the cost is going to be extremely more. And to Counselor Mackey's point, Sarah, I'm wondering, these side-by-sides, they're not all going in one direction. So how wide does the trail have to be for two side-by-sides to meet on the trail compared to what we have now?
Sarah?
So we, it's been recommended that the width moved to, from what we have been widening, where we have improved the trail from eight feet to 12 feet. And so that was that chart that was included under the second evaluation criteria question. And that was, I mean, it was a desktop exercise and a math exercise, basically, but that's kind of how we determined that value per kilometer.
Okay. Kim.
The only comment that I was going to make further to the insurance is it's not only about the premiums. What we are also observing in the market is a rising incidence of the insurance companies simply refusing to write a policy. So that's the other thing that I think that we need to be conscious of. We may not be able to obtain insurance at any price for some levels of risk. So that's why it's important for us to have, you know, have those conversations with our carrier.
Thank you, Kim. And Randy?
Good morning, County Council, and just wanted to raise a couple of matters based on some of the points that were raised. And one with respect to the Bruce County, I'm not familiar with the Bruce County trails, but I would note in the report, we did identify that their current trails are 3.6 to 4.3 meters wide. So this is wider for sure than even our average, which is 3.24 meters. So our, the current CP rail trail is 2.3 to 5.5 meters wide. I think you heard this from Counselor Body, that the trail width varies. And Sarah indicated that some of the trail sections we just widen, whether that's for infrastructure or there's bridges or culverts, like that was raised previously, is in terms of some of those can be widened, as well as some steep slopes. So definitely some sections of the trail that are very curvy, I would say. And with that, it causes site distance issues and sightline issues in some of those sections. So there's some sections that we're not even sure if we could even widen, even if we could explore that option of widening to 12 feet. So there may be some sections where we just have to divert around if council wants us to look at potentially allowing a wider vehicle on these certain sections of the trail. So I just want to raise those points. And then Counselor Millen raised the points with respect to the gates. And we know there's some gates where there's some challenges and some problems where we have vehicles going around certain gates. Some gates may be a bit wider than what we would normally like in terms of our trail standards. So we're developing as part of the RTMP recommendations a trail standards, basically, in terms of identifying what we could look at in terms of improvements to those entrance locations. Things like putting up either fencing on either side of the gates or stones or something that would prevent access or people or vehicles going around those gates and causing then trespassing issues. So as well as Sarah noted, that trying to work with some of our police services to help increase enforcement, we want to explore that option as well. Because as has been noted, there's already maybe existing issues in terms of trespassing, that's in terms of vehicles being wider than what's we currently permit on the trail. So these are some of the things that we're looking at and exploring further, and I just wanted to raise that as further information for council.
Thank you, Randy. Madam Clerk, anyone else?
Counselor Woodbury, and then, as I said, Counselor Desai has a secondary.
Thank you. Counselor Woodbury?
Thank you. I'd like to look at this from a slightly different angle, I think. To me, it's not a hard yes or no that it's going to cost us money or not right now. I think it's more of an idea of looking to the future. If the trend is to go wider to the side-by-sides, then at some point down the road, it may exclude ATVs simply because of what's on the market and out there. So what my stance on it is that we, I don't support the motion, but it doesn't mean that we have to allow them today or invest any money today. We could work with the clubs and the various users. They can fundraise. We can look at things down the road and phase it in. And I think that we've got a great trail system through, and that it does need to be updated and modernized at times, at places. So in my opinion, to say no, I think we're actually excluding a lot of use long-term. And so I think it needs a real solid look at. I, we have, down in our area, that's one of the big tourist things. Restaurants have decked back and things like that because of the trail going by. And what we're seeing is more families. We're seeing couples, I'd call them older couples, but they're younger than me still, that are using it now to get out for a bit. So to me, that isn't a solid yes or no. It, to me, it's looking to the future. And the other question that we can address separately is at what level do we want to fund it and what level do we want to phase it in? So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Woodbury. And lastly, on now to Counselor Desai.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Warden. One of the issues, I guess, Counselor Potter raised to this was the fact that, and it's not an exact quote, but the gist of it was, we do not have money for a number of social services. I strongly disagree with that. We have the money. We have been spending the money for those social services. And as I said in my earlier comment, I'm not saying we do the entire $1 million project in one go. We phase it in. As such, we can dictate at what level we want to phase it in on an annual basis through our budget. So I think I respectfully disagree with Counselor Potter on that we do not have money for other things. Therefore, we do not have money for this as well because we do have money for all the social services, and we could have money for the recreational service as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Desai. Okay, I think we're at the point where we're ready to call the question. And just to be clear, we are voting on the staff recommendation, which is to refuse the request to increase the width. I see you, Counselor Burley. I'll come back to you. Making a note. To refuse the request to increase the size to 65 inches and to assist interested parties in finding alternative routes. So we're going to be ready to call the question. Counselor Burley, you had something to say before we go?
Just for the point of clarity, I'm asking for a recorded vote.
Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, it's now in your hands.
My apologies, I was muted. Right, so you are voting on the staff recommendation? Counselor Mackey.
Opposed.
Counselor Burley.
In favor.
Counselor Carlton.
In favor.
Warden McQueen.
Opposed.
Counselor Desai.
Opposed.
Counselor Patterson.
In favor.
Deputy Warden Hicks.
In favor.
Counselor Clumpus.
In favor.
In favor.
Counselor Kentner?
You're muted.
Counselor Kentner?
Opposed. I said opposed.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Body?
In favor.
Counselor O'Leary?
In favor.
Counselor Woodbury?
Opposed.
Counselor Millen?
I will vote in favor.
Counselor Soever?
In favor.
Counselor Potter?
In favor.
Counselor Robinson?
Opposed.
Counselor Hutchinson?
In favor.
The motion is carried, 60 to 27.
Thank you.
May I ask a point of procedure, if I may, Mr. Deputy Warden?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So with Chatsworth, one member is absent. Does that member's vote go automatically opposed? Or is that not counted at all in a recorded vote?
Madam Clerk, Deputy Warden, it is not counted in the vote.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on. We are, oh, sorry, staffer fine on that one. Sarah? She's gone, I'm assuming. Do we need to take a break?
Great, thank you for for that. As part of this, we obviously look at upgrades to our CP rail trail as part of our operational budgets. So so as through budget discussions, this can be something that can be looked at, explored further in terms of other future opportunities that council wants to look at. So so the door is not completely shut. And of course, as Sarah noted, the club is, club has been fantastic to work with over the years. We want to continue that that strong partnership and look for maybe future opportunities to work together. And so we'll continue to explore those options and and bring those forward. And obviously have a further discussion with council.
Okay, so we have a couple of options here. We can take a break now, or we can push through and deal with, there are two more items that we have to deal with before we're going to close. How many people, just by sort of nodding your head up and down, how many people would like to push through? I see one nod from Counselor Burley. I see Counselor Kentner saying nod. But not many nods. How many people would like to take a break at this point? I see, I see a few nods. You know what? If anyone needs to take a break, we should probably take a break. Why don't we though find a medium here and make it a short break? Can we come back together is now on my, oops, on my, I see 10, nine minutes before noon. Can we come back at noon? Are we agreeable to that?
Yeah.
Then we will recess until noon.
Just a reminder to please mute and turn your cameras off.
Thank you. D, we're now dealing with the overview of a new proposed residential crossing over the CP rail trails. The motion is being moved by Counselor Desai and seconded by Counselor Carlton. Stephanie or Lacy or both, perhaps? You have the floor.
It's Stephanie that's going to take the lead on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, County Council and Mr. Deputy Warden. Did everyone hear me? Okay. All right, so before we have an overview of a new proposed residential crossing over the CP rail trail. Next slide, please. So for illustration purposes, the county recently received a request from a private landowner to cross the CP rail trail via the laneway for residential purposes, which would ultimately result in the need for installation of utilities over and under the CP rail trail. So historically, the existing laneway crossing the CP rail trail was used for farming purposes. By changing the use of this laneway from agricultural to residential purposes, several liability and legal concerns have been brought forward. So the subject property requiring access is in Gray Highlands on the northeast side of the CP rail trail referred as parcel A, and it has no frontage along an open or maintained public roadway. Parcel A and B are separate legally conveyable parcels of land. A building permit has been issued to the property owner for construction on parcel A. And construction is well underway with anticipated occupancy this December. Staff are seeking general support and principle for this proposal in order to proceed with drafting the required agreements. So what's needed? So to date, consent for easement and zoning amendment applications have already been submitted to Gray Highlands. The county requires the landowner to enter into a consent for easement agreement with the county to address matters pertaining to motor vehicle access, utility service provision, both overhead and underground, as well as emergency vehicle access. The intended function of the proposed easement agreement will be to clearly establish through title registration where the responsibility lies for any potential legal matters that may arise along the CP rail trail. The county will also require a county facility premises use agreement with the utility companies to legally permit access to the CP rail trail for installation of the utilities and restrictive covenants registered both against parcel A and B to indicate no drainage from either parcel A and B be diverted toward the CP rail trail. So what we know, this is certainly not the first instance where residential access crossing the CP rail trail has been or will be established. A fair amount of these existed prior to the county taking over ownership of the CP rail trail. There are also several farm access laneways currently that exist today for farmers to access their existing landlocked properties. With careful consideration under the recolor gray process, staff have incorporated a new policy under section 8.8, speaking to rail corridors with the intent to protect the rail corridor record or in event rail returns to the area. From a planning perspective, residential development on parcel B would have been the recommended approach if those lands have frontage on an open and maintained public roadway. And it would have limited the need to establish a new use of residential laneway and utility quarter over the CP rail trail. So going forward, because a building permit has been issued, staff are aiming to work with municipality along with the property owner to achieve ongoing access via the CP rail trail to parcel A. All agreements would be approved by the Director of Planning and Director of Legal Services, the county solicitor, before they would be signed. And it is recommended that staff be directed to prepare a policy for dealing with these types of requests for crossings across the CP rail trail in the future. And next slide, please just demonstrate or show us the recommendations of this report. Be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions? I see Counselor Mill. Go ahead, Counselor Mill.
Thank you, Deputy, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Stephanie, you had indicated that the construction is well underway. How did this building get a building permit without having legal access to a roadway? Or was that Gray Highlands? Oh, Pa, shall we say?
For you, Mr. Deputy Warden. Yeah, it was, it was definitely something that county staff were made aware of after the fact. And there, there could have been a potential mishap in in the process for issuing the building permit in this case.
Very diplomatic, Stephanie. I commend you on your
I certainly can't speak to the potential requirements that a property owner would have to go through in terms of maintaining safety as well as, you know, ensuring ongoing and continuing access to their property should rail return. And that's a big concern that we have, especially when you have, in this case, for example, they're looking to connect to natural gas as well as hydro. And so with utilities, those present additional potential concerns with a changing use in this case. So it's something that we definitely take or not to take lightly, and it's something that we need to keep our eye on for sure.
Okay, Counselor McQueen. Or sorry, Warden McQueen. You're muted.
I'm muted. There we are. There we are. Sorry, I get called lots of things, so don't worry. And certainly, I appreciate the comments from Counselor Millen. I would be asking the same question. I think there was a number of properties throughout Gray Highlands and maybe even Southgate and other areas, Chatsworth, where the rail line does intersect. This is like a farm. And certainly, from the perspective of the young couple that are building house, they certainly sort of got caught up in this, and all they wanted to do is build a house on their farm. And so it does raise a bigger question is, does does the rail line create two separate parcels and just parking that to the side? And so I guess when this was was came up, and I guess inadvertently, they just went applied for a building permit, got a building permit, and then I guess all of a sudden they realized they needed to bring utilities in. I think it sort of came from the utility side going, oh, and I can't speak to the intricacies that happen in between that for staff, both our staff and Gray County staff and also on the legal side was trying to figure out, okay, what do we do here? Anyway, long story short, there was an application to the committee of adjustment to create a separate right of way across the front parcel because it's, you know, it has raised a bigger question is, do these farms actually have two lots versus one big lot because of the rail line that does intersect it? But, long story short, it went through the committee of adjustment, a right of way was created trying to address, because the houses, I understand, was quite a far, quite a long way along. And so it's pretty hard to go backwards after somebody's, you know, gone that level. So anyway, this is sort of what I think through legal, they worked through this. And certainly, this is just securing access across it. I know other areas in the county, there is agreements raised or reached to bring utilities across, I think more, you know, even in probably Dundalk and other areas where there is agreements and all that type of thing. And certainly, certainly those encroachments have to be put in place. They don't affect if there was a future rail line coming back, they have to make sure that they're installed and correctly is that sense. But saying that, there is also all kinds of access for agricultural accesses from the front parcel to the back too. So whether that's through a laneway. So this is something that probably has gone on as far as accessing front to back with the rail line intersecting for since the rail lines went in. So it's just one of those things that we sort of got caught up in on the adjusted, the legal parts of things and how you and certainly with putting utilities, you might want to make sure you have the agreements in place to do that. And this is moving that forward. And certainly, a report moving forward for future, you know, is to address if this comes to be an issue in the future. So it's very important to address them, to address or create some policies around that as well. So thank you, Mr. Deputy Ward. Hope that helps.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And you were asking a question about severance, and perhaps our lawyer, Mr. Laterno, can answer better, but I believe it does create a natural severance for that property.
Mr. Deputy Warden, I do see Director Schertz would provide some comments.
Okay, Randy?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Warden. And yeah, I just wanted to raise that point is that where the rail line bisected properties in the past, it in some cases has created now two separately conveyable parcels. Obviously, in this situation, one parcel has access to open and maintain public road, and one does not. And so that's the situation. I know there's, as the warden indicated, there's lots of properties that been bisected by the rail line. Some, most of the crossings have been, for historical purposes, been to access farm fields. And it definitely changes the nature when you go from a farm field access to a residential access, because as Stephanie noted in her report, you're getting that into infrastructure and utility crossings either over or under the trail. And then that raises then implications if rail were to ever return to the area. What does that mean? So that's exactly the whole reasons why we're recommending and suggesting we bring back a policy in a report for how we deal with these matters on a go-forward basis. Obviously, you know, we recognize mistakes are made, and we're wanting to work with Gray Highlands and this property owner to try to rectify this particular issue while protecting the interests of the county. But in a go-forward basis, we want to establish a policy framework that would be supported them obviously by council in terms of how we would deal with these situations on a go-forward basis.
Thank you, Randy. So I think we're ready to call the question. The staff proposal is that the residential crossing be supported in principle, that bylaws be prepared, and that staff would be directed to bring back policy for future consideration. So I call the question, is there anyone opposed? I see none. I'm going to say that that is carried. Okay, I think we wanted to deal with Madam Clerk, help me out. It was something we wanted to deal with prior to, oh, the Provincial Offenses Court update audio hearing.
Actually, we need to go back to item H on the consent agenda that Counselor Columbus pulled. So we'll need it moved and seconded to put it on the floor for discussion.
Excellent. Thank you for reminding me about that. So that's right. That's the correspondence from the Town of Blue Mountains. I'm going to say moved by Counselor Columbus, seconded by Warden McQueen. I've got Warden McQueen, his hand was up. So Counselor Columbus, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Deputy Warden. I just wanted to bring this forward to say that I do support this in principle and appreciate that the request has been for delegated authority is rather limited in scope. But I'm just wondering if this is an opportunity, because a report has been requested of staff to come forward, that this might, this kind of thing might be applicable to other lower tiers as well. And I'm just wondering if this is an opportunity, perhaps, to really look at planning at the lower tier and planning at the upper tier, and through communication and collaboration, look for areas where there may be some duplications, or there may be some efficiencies that might be found. With that in mind, in this report that Randy will be, that staff will be bringing back, to begin with, I'm just wondering if staff could give us some idea of what thoughts along that line might be included in that staff report.
Who will speak to this?
I can speak to this, Deputy Warden, and thank you for the question. I think in terms of the initial report, although the report would focus on the request from Town of Blue Mountains, the process and framework that would be identified in the staff report for potentially delegating certain approvals could then be utilized by other local municipalities should they wish to take on certain approvals. We know that Simcoe County has delegated approvals for plans and subdivisions and condominiums to the majority of their local municipalities. And so we've already reached out to them just to get some preliminary information. Simcoe has delegated the approvals in a phased approach over the past 20 years. And Simcoe staff noted that any potential staff time savings resulting from delegated approvals has allowed them to focus their time on strategic and long-term planning projects and initiatives that benefit the county as a whole. So this is some of the things that we're wanting to, I guess, explore further in the staff report. We know that there's different planning models out there. Wellington County has delegated certain approvals to some municipalities where other municipalities, they provide all the planning services. And we know neighbors to our west in Bruce County provide all the planning services to the local municipalities. So you can see there are various planning models, and we were going to explore some of those in further detail, provide that in the staff report as background information. And so we're hoping to address some of those matters, I think, that Counselor Columbus is pointing to. We are also meeting with local municipal planners next week, so we can add this as an agenda item for that, for some further discussion with the local planners group. And then we'd be happy to bring back that information in a staff report for council to consider.
Thank you, Randy. Counselor Columbus, anything else?
No, that's very good. Thank you for that information. I appreciate it.
Very good, Counselor Soever. I see your hand.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden. So the reason for this request, as you can see, it was approved by council is to really create some efficiencies in the planning process. When there is an approval of subdivision or condo that goes with it, a off, most times, almost all the time, a zoning bylaw amendment that has to go on at the local level. So what we have is, you know, our council deliberating, we have the county council deliberating, we have two planning staffs working on essentially the same file. And certainly, that's not efficient. Now, although not directly relevant, because we are only asking for a limited amount of authorities at this time to be delegated and to see how that works initially, anyway. The, what happens is, in the case of the Gibraltar pit, our council actually did not make a decision in time and actually ended up opposing what the county had already approved. And we found ourselves in being in an LPAT, which we subsequently negotiated our way out of at the local level and got concessions from the proponent, which satisfied the members of the community. So in situations like that, you know, we'd hate to be in a situation where our refusal of a zoning bylaw amendment and the county's approval of a plan of subdivision are at odds and result on us being on separate sides in an LPAT with legal costs on both sides. So I think that's really the genesis of this. I'd like to also point out that, well, we'll wait for the report, but Owen Sound does take care of its own being, you know, the heart of Gray County and probably planning decisions taken in Owen Sound have much more effect on a larger area of Gray County than planning decisions here in the northeast corner. Then, you know, that hasn't caused any issues to date. So I think it's a worthwhile initiative, and I'm very pleased to see Mayor Columbus and me are interested as well.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Soever. I don't see any other hands, so perhaps.
Actually, Director Schertz would like to provide some follow-up.
Just a bit of clarification, just on the, so county council does have the ability to delegate certain approvals, and we can highlight that in the staff report in terms of what approvals can be delegated. However, there are certain approvals that cannot be delegated, such as approvals for county official plan amendments, approvals of local official plans and local official plan amendments in accordance with the Planning Act. So I just wanted to highlight that just because the example of the Gibraltar pit, that was a county official plan amendment that can't be delegated by county council. That has to remain as the approval for the county. So in some cases, you know, we work with some local municipalities because the Planning Act does require the county to have a county official plan, whereas local official plans are optional. So we've worked with municipalities to, because our county official plan provides obviously policies for the entire county, we don't have a lot of detail with respect to our settlement areas in our official plan because we want to provide that flexibility for local municipalities. So in some cases, some municipalities have focused their local official plans in their settlement areas and have left the rural and agricultural areas up to the county official plan. So this is one example of where you could look at creating some further efficiencies by only in some cases requiring county official plan amendments in your rural and agricultural areas and focusing on your, the local policies in where we're experiencing a majority of our growth and development from a building perspective. So so these are some of the things that we can flesh out further, obviously, in the staff report, and we'll bring some of those discussions back to see where some further efficiencies can be found.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Oh, I see Brian Mill.
Just a quick question to Randy, if I might. Randy, would the report also talk about the financial implications as well as the planning implications for the two layers of government?
Yeah, well, we can try to address that to some degree. It'd be a pretty, you know, we would have to dig into a lot further if you, if council wanted to look at, you know, what's currently spent both at the county level and local level on planning related matters. That would be a more robust report. If council is wanting that level of detail, we can try to work with our local municipal partners and bring some of that information forward. We were going to look at, obviously, if we were to delegate some of the approvals that are being requested by Blue Mountains, we are going to provide obviously some staff time estimates in terms of potential savings of staff time. Just on that, we think that it's, because we're delegated by the province for municipal plan review, we would still, staff would still need to review some of the plans and subdivisions like we do right now for the city of Owen Sound. We review and provide comments to the city on those plans and subdivision applications, especially in where there's in close proximity to county roads. Because in some cases where we require additional lands or daylight triangles associated with those. So there would still be staff review for those applications. So we still need to review all the various studies and provide comments. But there may be some administrative savings on the actual approval side of that process. And we've already delegated some certain tasks, like delegation of public meetings to local municipalities for plans of sub condos, because we were finding it was challenging to schedule county council and local councils at the same time. And as Counselor Soever, there usually is an accompanying local application with a subdivision. So with this, county staff still attend those public meetings and obviously
and focusing on your, the local policies in where we're experiencing a majority of our growth and development from a building perspective. So these are some of the things that we can flesh out further, obviously, in the staff report. And we'll bring some of those discussions back to see where some further efficiencies can be found.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Oh, I see Brian Mill.
Just a quick question to Randy, if I might. Randy, would the report also talk about the financial implications as well as the planning implications for the two layers of government?
Yeah, well, we can try to address that to some degree. It'd be a pretty, you know, we would have to dig into that further if you, if council wanted to look at, you know, what's currently spent both at the county level and local level on planning related matters. That would be a more robust report. If council is wanting that level of detail, we can try to work with our local municipal partners and bring some of that information forward. We were going to look at, obviously, if we were to delegate some of the approvals that are being requested by Blue Mountains, we are going to provide obviously some staff time estimates in terms of potential savings of staff time. Just on that, we think that it's, because we're delegated by the province for municipal plan review, we would still, staff would still need to review some of the plans and subdivisions like we do right now for the city of Owen Sound. We review and provide comments to the city on those plans and subdivision applications, especially in where there's in close proximity to county roads. Because in some cases where we require additional lands or daylight triangles associated with those. So there would still be staff review for those applications. So we still need to review all the various studies and provide comments. But there may be some administrative savings on the actual approval side of that process. And we've already delegated some certain tasks, like delegation of public meetings to local municipalities for plans of sub condos, because we were finding it was challenging to schedule county council and local councils at the same time. And as Counselor Soever, there usually is an accompanying local application with a subdivision. So with this, county staff still attend those public meetings and obviously listen to the dialogue. But we delegated some of those tasks already, again, to provide some of those efficiencies. So these are things we can definitely highlight in the report and also look for other opportunities to provide efficiencies, which we always tried to look for. And like I said, we're meeting with local planners next week, so we can maybe explore some of those opportunities further.
Thank you, Randy. I appreciate all that. I just, and I look forward to the report. But I just wonder if this is the case, and be careful what you're asking for. But anyway, we shall see. Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Okay, I think we're ready to call the questions. So on the motion, sorry.
Mr. Deputy Warden, I just wonder, the resolution is very specific to delegated authority with the Town of Blue Mountains and some specific items. And council has discussed the broadening perhaps of that staff report. So I wondered if a, an amendment for council's consideration that an additional clause be added, that the staff report also include a review of current planning processes countywide and the exploration of other options, which may identify further efficiencies within the overall planning process. And I just put that out for council's consideration, so that the report coming back to you is fulsome in nature.
And I suppose, Madam Clerk, that if we're doing that, expanding it, we might as well add Counselor Mill's suggestion about cost.
We could certainly add the cost to that.
And is it appropriate that we do that at this time?
Yes, we can add, it hasn't been moved or seconded, so we could certainly add further efficiencies with the overcall planning process and the costs associated with those.
Okay, and Counselor Columbus, are you content with that amendment?
Yes, absolutely. That was my original intent, and I appreciate the clerk and Randy working with me on that. So thank you, yes.
Thank you, then. And who was our second, I'm forgetting now?
So it was Warden McQueen on the original, and we are just voting on the amendment, and then we'll vote on the main motion as amendment.
So the amendment will then be moved by Counselor Columbus and seconded by, I guess, Counselor Kentner, because I see him waving his hand. Okay, are we ready to vote on the amendment, which is expanding the recommendations? Is there anyone opposed to the amendment? I don't see any, Madam Clerk. I'm going to say that that is carried. And now on the main motion, which is to receive and for a staff report to be brought forward. Is there anyone opposed to that? I don't see any. That too is carried. Thank you very much. We are now going to move.
Kim has, I'm sorry, Mr. Deputy Warden, CAO Windgrove has a quick comment, I think.
Just one more item, counsel. I will add this to our priority setting plan and discussion on the 15th. And at that time, we can determine the timeline for getting this report back to you. Okay, thanks.
Just one more thing to do, huh, Kim?
Yes.
All right. So I'm going to suggest, and I'm looking for, I guess, unanimous consent, that we move item seven, other business, the Provincial Offenses Court Update Audio Hearing, move it up to now, prior to us going into closed session, so that it can be heard now and not have to wait until we come out of closed session. Is there anyone opposed to that? I see no one being opposed. So we can go ahead with item number seven then.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's my pleasure to have Amanda Kokas, our Provincial Offenses Court Manager, with us this morning. As you're likely aware, our provincial offenses courts have been closed since the beginning of the pandemic. And as you can appreciate, that's caused an awful lot of matters to really back up in the system. And Amanda and her team and some of the IT staff at the county have worked on a really innovative solution. And I really wanted Amanda to have a minute with you just to explain what they've done and let you know how things are moving forward here. Go ahead, Amanda, thanks.
Thanks, Kim. And thank you, Deputy Warden. Yes, we've had some very exciting time in POA the last couple of months. The province has changed legislation that has allowed us to increase our technology both inside the courtroom and in our administration. They also allowed each court to decide whether they wanted to move forward with audio court or whether they wanted to wait until in-person matters were back. We decided to be one of the very few courts in the whole province that decided to move forward. And by engaging with our local police agencies, our judiciary, our IT staff, our prosecution department, and our own staff, we were able to come up with a very cool technology that uses the Zoom platform and integrated into our court recording system, which was the main priority, that we have to keep our court recording system intact. So our IT department was able to link Zoom into our system, which allows the justice of the peace to phone in, all the defendants to phone in. They sit into a virtual waiting room, and they're allowed to be brought into the courtroom one at a time and have their matters dealt with. So we've received some great feedback. We've had three successful courts so far. We actually had the regional senior justice of the peace preside over one of them. He provided us great feedback. He was so impressed by the technology, by the scheduling, all aspects of it. And he was going to take those comments back to the province and then share how great of a process that Graham Bruce Killers have come up with. So I'm very thankful for staff and the IT department and everybody for coming up with the solution. And I think this is just the beginning of the technology side of things that, you know, POA court has to offer. And I'm hoping that we can continue to move forward, embrace all these different changes.
Thank you, Amanda. That's fantastic news. And I see the makings for another Toronto Star article. That's excellent, counselors. Any questions or comments?
Amanda, how many matters have you heard?
So we've heard over 200 matters within the last three days, and we continue to have a number of matters dealt with. So we have scheduled audio court for the next, the rest of the year. So we're hoping, we have over 1,000 trials that are sitting waiting to be heard. So we're hoping that this is going to help deal with some of the backlog, and we can get some of these matters dealt with.
Thank you, Counselor Soever.
Well, that was my question, that how many do we have in the backlog? Because our officers here have issued a lot of tickets and things, and just wondering when the backlog might be cleared.
Right. So yes, we do have over 1,000 trials sitting waiting to be scheduled. That's just for part one trials. We have over 800 part three trials sitting waiting to be dealt with as well. So we are continuing to book as many as possible. The defendants also have to be willing to meet with our prosecution or our crown to come to resolutions. Because as of right now, we aren't proceeding with trials. It's only matters that are resolved, pre-trial matters or something that's being withdrawn. We do have a huge backlog, but we are hoping that we should be able to clear the backlog by the end of December with no issues.
So Amanda, how are we dealing with the Jordan cases, which is about delay in the context of COVID?
Well, I could probably ask, there was a new case that was just heard in the appeal court. I'm not sure if Michael Letourneau's there, if he could speak to it. I don't know the full logistics of it. But that issue was dealt with just recently, I believe, last week in the appeal court.
Michael, anything done?
Is he not here?
Can you hear me?
Yes, there you are.
Not seeing, am I not seeing, there I am, okay. Thank you, our prosecutors. Thank you, Deputy Warden. Our prosecutors are tracking Jordan issues and working to keep all matters moving ahead as judiciously as possible to fulfill the prosecution's obligations under Jordan. And working as best we can under the circumstances of what's able to be accomplished in court at this time. And I would just echo that Amanda and her team have worked incredibly hard and have been very helpful to prosecution staff in trying to move matters forward, because we're sensitive to the backup on the part one side as well. So the more we can do to move the backlog forward, the better.
Excellent. Thank you, Michael. And thank you, Amanda. That's terrific news. It's great to see that Gray County is in a position of being a model for the province. Awesome. Okay, so I think we are ready for the motion to go into closed session. That is moved by Counselor Hutchison and seconded by Counselor Potter. Anyone opposed? Then that's carried. So we'll take us.
So the staff remaining, Deputy Warden, will be Kim, myself, Kevin Wepler, Rob Hatton. So Rob will let us know.
And everyone else is out?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, you can go ahead.
Thank you. We're back in open session now. I would make a declaration that we met in closed session only for the matters indicated in the closed meeting portion of the agenda and for nothing else. At this point, I'm looking, entertaining a motion to adjourn the council meeting.
Do we have any notice of motion, Mr. Chair?
Oh, my apologies. Thank you. Yes. Any notice of motion?
I would like to bring one forward, Mr. Chair. I would like to, in the spirit of reconciliation, I would ask that staff bring a draft First Nations Land Acknowledgement Statement to be used at the start of our council meetings forward. So I'm going to propose that motion at the next meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any other notices of motion?
Counselor Burley.
Counselor Burley.
It's not a note of motion. I would like to commend the CAO on her headphones. I'm able to hear very nicely, and it's really a great improvement. Thank you.
Okay, so.
McQueen's, I'm sorry. I see Warden McQueen's hand.
Okay, Warden McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden. And I guess this is a little bit more under other business that was just before notice of motions. But I want to take this opportunity again, thank you for the great job you did today. And I know traditionally, usually by September, I just want to make the announcement that I will be running for Warden or will be putting my name forward again for the 2021 season. I don't know if you want to call it season. 2020 has been a whirlwind season, I will say. And, but anyway, traditionally, usually by September, people make that announcement. And I just was going to make that announcement today. So thank you for that.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anything else, either under other business or any notices of motion? Seeing none, then I will move to item nine, adjournment, that is being moved by Counselor Hutchison and seconded by Counselor Mill. All those, oh, well, any opposed? I see none. Thank you so much, folks. Have a great day. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving. Bye, everyone.
You all stay safe.
Remember, no more than 10 people in your household.